I am so excited.
And now let's try to take care of this.
We hope that all the businesses can be taken care of.
Jaycee, we love you too.
We'll talk.
Your business is better than hers.
I have. Did they start? Did they start?
That's supposed to be.
I, I have.
She's one of the.
Girl, I found out so much about her going.
We'll talk. You coming to the, um, ugly sweater tonight?
I don't know, but I've seen her.
My husband's doing so wrong.
He's up in town to possibly.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hey, Chelsea. Uh, yes, three musketeers.
No, then don't come. No, you, you got stuff to do. But we'll talk. Yes, I do. Yes, I got your number. I will. I'll call you.
All right.
Best of luck up there. Right. You think, um, Gray Everett coming? I don't see no C for her. That's why I was asking. Right. Who you telling?
Hey, Monica, um, Morrison.
Hey, y'all.
One of my.
Whoa, oh.
But you can't do no wrong in my business. I don't get what you said.
Hey, everybody. We, um, should have corn.
Nah, I didn't hear that.
And, um, sorry, I had to make sure. I don't know why the other live didn't have comments. It's just, it's don't like me right now. No problem with sharing. I'm happy to be here. Yes, this is a big crowd. Let me show y'all. So, y'all see, and all the media is here too. We finally having a meeting though. So they happy. Y'all see the robbers? Y'all see Dan Lee? Ms. Thelma and Ms., uh, Valerie is over there. Dr. Nikita is here. Of course, our two favorite trustees is here.
She's been through. So we love her like we love the turpentine doll. We really do. She's just persevered through so much and still strong in her position.
I don't know how to make you a my, um, Mara. I finally got it right. What's this ad for? So just start a Q and A.
Because it is very difficult. Art has to be in their position. I can't even understand. But I just don't come in here trying to call Karen. So much she begged for her to be here. I hope she will come in here and try to call her.
Hold on.
Karen Parlier. That would be insane.
Add us, my reader.
Thank you, Margaret, Ms. Liz. I love the name.
Okay, I added you, Mara.
So my friend wants you to make a necklace for her sister. She's, she's, um, she's in the fight as well.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'll let you know something. Yes.
I got you.
Childhood friend.
I got you.
Family, basically.
Tell her I'm sorry to hear that.
Thank you.
But I got her.
She said she got you. She's good, honey. She said she got you. She got you.
When she need it, ma?
Um, what do you need it for, Monica?
Cause I'm leaving, um, Monday, so.
Oh, you know what she is? She's, uh, going on vacation for Christmas.
I can make it before I leave, but I'm just saying that she.
Well, you know what? Her sister's in Atlanta, so it would have to, you know.
Cause I can make it.
She's here and you would have to mail it or something.
Yeah, I can mail it. Yeah, I do it. I take, that's what I'm saying. I'm gonna take, I'm gonna take some of it with me. And, uh, just make, I just hate making stuff and then it ain't specifically for people if that makes sense.
Yeah.
And then most of the time I break them apart and then I have to remake it. So. But tell I got her, I'm gonna definitely take all my, my jewelry. And everybody, I have not, I posted a couple things on my, um, post. Um, just like what I made for a customer that's coming today. Um, but I really have stuff. I just, I've just been, I was distracted yesterday. Uh, who you telling? Yesterday with a huge. Who, Earth? Oh. I can believe it.
I'm gonna miss because I think this is the power I said.
Did I lay in here? Uh, we got a full corn. Oh, look at that. Did y'all get our agenda? Did you get our agenda? They have some in the back. Oh, okay. Well, you know she don't rush for us.
I'm just saying, but that's kind of ridiculous.
She's ridiculous.
Everybody is ready.
She got a mask today.
I just don't understand. Are you afraid of, uh, of germs or are you not?
She don't want her face to be shown.
To be seen, sporting America, but I. And when I say seen, I mean, I just see them on the news.
Me just waiting on one little bird to join the show. Y'all see her, her people here? I'm using my cellphone, y'all, so. Just know that I'm scanning left to right. We have a corn. Ooh, I can hear.
She directed her word going to make.
She make a show, she signing in.
Is there anything else you're gonna say? Is that all? Basically, did I do good?
Is that the one? Did I say what I was supposed to say? Try it again, um, Mara. I think that it should have worked this time.
I'm just sure. I mean, when I saw.
I saw your text flash on my screen. No problem, y'all. Y'all know I can't read these, um, these comments. I'll read them later. But she guys are the mayor. Good, good one. I'm okay with it.
I want us to have a show. That's the only reason why I am in this location where people are being messed. Because over here is nothing but drunk. They have a year in partnership because of seven different places. And I put it right over here. That just show you the corruption in all of.
She said corruption. Girl, show them bank accounts. How do you lose banks and say corruption in the same sentence?
But Bingo was in the building in Dalton yesterday.
We really did have Bingo at Melanie Fitness, the fake Dalton Police Department. Libraries. It has a R, library. Not library.
They are hurting you guys. They hurting me.
Not hurting me.
They're hurting the residents, people. You're the ones that should benefit from this, but you're not because people not coming to pay bills. We have been paying bills for over three months almost. It's been three months with no bills being paid. We called several different meetings. We should have approved the assurance.
Assurance. What's assurance? The assurance.
No one showed up to the meeting but myself.
Insurance.
That is it. The other two individuals have not attended.
They're here now. Let's get on.
And y'all know that's the fact. Cause y'all come to the meeting, y'all recorded, and y'all see that we out there and they are never there.
Thank you.
So I want that out so you understand. So come, get this, uh, meeting started. Okay. I'd like to talk to all this special meeting on today is December twentieth, twenty twenty-fourth, and the time is? One oh seven PM. Please call Mara. Trustee Gonzalez.
Rest in.
Trustee Ray Everett. Trustee Carla.
Present.
Supervising here. Next, um.
I don't, I don't stand for that.
No prayer?
She a devil.
Father, we do thank you and we praise you for just an opportunity to call your name.
I don't like other people prayers.
One more time. Now, God, we come on behalf of this township, of these leaders, Father. We ask so God that you would allow the peace that the passage of all understanding to guard our hearts and our minds. You know what has to be done. Father, help us to do it. And whatever the enemy has planned for our evil, we turn it around. We ask that you turn it for our good. And we thank you in advance for peace, 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 peace. Be still in Jesus. All right, is there a motion to approve the meeting for the special meeting on October thirtieth or twenty twenty-fourth? Is there a motion? Um, there's a. All right, the motion's second in discussion. Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Ray Everett. Trustee Carla.
Yes.
Supervising here. Yes, motion passed. Next, is there a motion to approve the general fund, please?
Um, I like the motion.
Okay, um. Is there a second? All right.
Amendment motion.
Make a superseding motion to pay all bills. I do not come to board meetings to play games. If you did work for us, you did anything for township, we are here today to pay all the bills. Not one person should not be paying because you have not paid one bill for three months. So pay every finger that's on the list. You should not be moving anybody.
Uh-uh.
Nobody. So that is my motion. Is there a second? Is the motion second to pay?
Of course Darlene's second.
Call Mara. Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Ray Everett?
Yes.
Trustee Carla?
No.
Supervising here.
Yes.
All right, so the motion failed and these no bills get paid. Um, my advice to the board is to pay the bills. Other than that, all the vendors, all the people, you're already messing up our credibility with vendors.
Our credibility.
We work because they say we do not pay them. And as you can see, we do not pay them because people get here and pay the tits with their money. They did the work, paid the people for the work they done.
Why don't you back on their state which bills they wanna pay?
So the special meeting.
That must say which order wanna pay.
Lot of orders.
Let them stay which bill they wanna pay.
We gotta have the bills.
You know what I'm saying? And then I'm gonna pay the bills that you wanna lap the bill.
So the motion to pay the bills, you don't wanna pay these bills.
You wanna lap the bill.
I would like to make an amendment motion. So we do wanna pay bills, but I have an amendment motion.
Okay. Well, I'm not in favor of the amendment motion. You can make the motion. Please, guys, you want to take out a bill. Go ahead.
Um, there's an amendment motion to take out item one ninety-nine, which is Excel printing, um, two hundred, which is Excel printing. Um, I have questions about the toys. Um, not saying that I don't wanna pay anything for the toys, but I do have questions about that. So that's two oh two one two sixteen. Um, gonna take out two twenty-three, which is, uh, Southland RCM Communications. Uh, two twenty-four, which is Southland RCM Communication. And, you know, that's the, okay. And so, um, just to be, uh, clear, so we have a new image ordinance that says that no elected or appointed official can use the township to promote their person, their slogan, their name, their image, or anything. And if they do, then they have to pay for those things. And so, again, we're just trying to make sure that the rules that are put in place are followed. That's it. We're not trying to say that anybody can't be paid, but you have to follow rules if you wanna be paid. So technically, your township doesn't owe these people any image that has, uh, the supervisor's face name. She has to pay that according to the.
That's right.
Just one move. That's it.
What, you're done?
No, actually, about the toys. Have the toys been purchased?
Are you done?
I'm asking a question.
The public wants to know what the answer.
Ask the question. Answer the question. Answer the question.
We are to vote and move on.
Answer the question.
At the end of the day, you should know what's paid for and what's not.
Well, I don't, I'm asking a question. Do you have the toys?
That's right.
Are the toys?
They, it's something up with toys, y'all.
Or do they still need to be delivered? That's a question I have.
If she can't answer that.
You finished?
Ask the question. Answer her.
No, I'm, oh, I'm, I have a question. Have the toys been purchased?
How about you ask the question?
This is, this is yes or no.
Okay, well, we're spying. Okay.
See yes or no. See, you don't want the public to know.
Ask them.
I don't need toys. My kids is good.
Ask the question, Tucker.
Are they paid for or not? That was the question.
We ask the question.
If she won't answer it. I hope her sup, one supporter hears this and sees how she's acting.
We don't have insurance. So let me be very clear. After this meeting, we still won't have certain types of insurances. So what if somebody's trying not to pay?
Right. She doesn't care.
Her by force. The township doesn't have coverage to even take care of that. We will not, we will not have insurance after this meeting. No liability, no auto insurance. We're talking about toys, but we need insurance. And then there are no insurance. So I'm starting to go to give us a quote.
Stop believing I have insurance. I'm like, purse to the form. Let me say it. She sounds dumb.
Uh, nah, she sounds like she know what she talking about. To call somebody dumb that you appointed.
You appointed her.
You appointed her.
You guys did not come to a board meeting and put the township in jeopardy. We don't have insurance because you two did not come and take care of the bills.
No, because the township is a liability. The township is a liability.
I'm not able to obtain insurance without a warrant. So somehow other people have the problem. I think you're the problem.
Exactly. She is.
No, you are.
Can we not get insurance because you can't be out it?
Right. Yes or no?
I don't think the insurance on here. Is it just you can't be out it? Is that because you can't be out it?
It's because she's not insurable.
I have some clarification.
We got proof of everything. We got email change.
Change. Email change.
Begging you guys to come to a special board meeting. We got their lot of law. I'm telling y'all, come to a special board.
Attorney, can they do the insurance without the board?
To come and do your job.
Can they make the payments without the board?
That's why we don't have insurance.
That's not why.
That is the truth. That is.
It's simply him not able to be insured. It's simply him not able to be insured.
She's very uninsurable.
It's her to just watch her own dollar signs add up. I don't blame her. I mean, I do blame her because she's trying to track money, but.
The other, exactly. You heard her. The other insurance. Her peoples.
Why were you still bussing people in uninsured vehicles?
You're not insurable. You're not insurable. That's what.
So move on. We have a motion. We have a second.
You're not insurable.
Insurance, we're not sure if the bills, you guys think that you want to remove the titles? I'm saying no. I think you guys should move forward, pay everybody their money.
Why did you have an event if you weren't insured? Why did you have Big Bingo yesterday with no insurance, Tiffany? Why did you have Big Bingo with no insurance? Well, if they vote no, then they, you don't pay everybody. It's not your way or no way.
It's been second. It's been second. Call or roll?
So she's not gonna pay the bill?
No.
So you're not voting not to pay the bill? So you just voted not to pay?
Because you mad. Thank you knows for watching this disaster.
You pay your rent.
So you just voted not to pay them?
The landlord was at the last meeting. She was at the last meeting. She was at the last meeting. She was at the last meeting. Call somebody stupid. You the one that's dumb that's actually falling for her shit. Girl, shut the fuck up. Why should not be concerned that she a crap? She a whole ass crump.
Don't answer. Don't argue. Let her asshole throw.
She ain't pay her rent? I don't wanna be her landlord.
Um, I have a question about, um, the items that are in your citation boxes. Um, I know.
Okay, I'm back home. I know those her hackles.
Does that still apply with the image ordinance, um, or do they not have to comply with the image ordinance and general assistance?
Huh?
I'm sorry, I have to.
She about to cry.
All right, so we not wanting to sit here. I can give you that light. We gotta make a motion to take it out. That GA department is the only department that sold the supervisor. But you guys keep going. Just so y'all know what they're doing up here, they're incompetent. They are not paying for your food. So when you come to our.
And you are not getting on that ballot.
That's what. They didn't pay nobody. We have no food in our food. That's the one that's true. So y'all can keep.
So do layoffs. The lawyer. You could have used that money to pay for the food. But they looking at her picture.
And you, and you call that no way. Again, the boxes, the boxes are with her image or her name. Again, if you're trying to deceive the people, feed the people, if the box care about. If you're concerned about, if you're concerned about paying for the food. If you're concerned about feeding the people, feed the people. Why does your name not have something for people?
Ask Tucker.
Yeah, yeah, Karen.
Follow the rules. For thirty years, like the other rules. The same image that been on the box, for thirty years, the same image on there now. But because of your jealousy, your hatred, you don't want my name on the box. Stop.
Okay, then why your name gotta be on there?
I'm so glad she not gonna be on the ballot.
It ain't about y'all. It's about a box and a name. Yep, we know we got to that. We supposed to lead the people, vote to lead the people. That's what the motion is. Move forward. All right, so motion's second on the floor to pay general assistance and power. We ain't gonna, I mean, she could, she could still respond from there. You just like, it's still on here. What do you wanna do?
Yeah, wait a second. Yes, Chris. Yes, trustee Gardon. Wow. She wanna get, she's taking people's vote away?
That's her, that's what she do.
Y'all, she's taking people's vote away? And this is the kind of meeting she was begging them to come to, y'all. Like someone would really wanna show up today.
Trustee Ray Everett? Trustee Carla? Supervising here. Yes. All right, again, no more be okay. Next, is there a motion for, uh, Roland Bridge? Is there a motion? Is there a second? Second. Call Mara. Go girl. You go girl.
He don't say anything. Hold on.
Trustee Gonzalez? Trustee Carla? Supervising here. Yes. All right, moving on. Next, do you have resolution proclamation in words? Uh, is there a motion to?
Lot taking people's vote away, but she's arguing.
To do a consent agenda for this department from one, uh, what person is there a motion to do a consent agenda? Is there a motion? Is there a second? Is there a motion second, Carla?
Discussion. You ain't even answered. I wanna talk about it.
Trustee Gonzalez. Trustee Hendrick. We know it's trustee Ray Everett. We can also pass it here. Yes. All right, is there a motion to group number one?
No, karma's not me.
Number two.
I don't know how. I just saw that comment, but no.
And the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Second. All right, Carla.
I have a question.
We gonna do number three. We are removing that one because we have to do something differently. So we doing one, two, and four. So we doing one, two, and four. We, we gonna get to that, so we on, on one of you guys has decreed to group, so we're grouping one, two, and four.
Trustee Gonzalez. Trustee Carla. Trustee Gray. Supervisors in here.
Alright, um, so for number three is a. Okay, so for number three, it was the general fund and general assistant fund tax levy. Um, the reason why I pulled this one from the agenda is because we have to, first, you have to budget. You cannot levy the people's tax money without telling them how you're gonna spend their money. So that's the reason why I removed number three from the agenda.
Wait a second, I thought we were voting on the insurance products.
See, she's manipulative.
That's a tax levy, alright, just ready to, just ask you. Three, see? Just break that to me. Just through one, two, and four.
No, she's tricky, tries to manipulate.
We just approved under section seven or eight.
Okay, I just read it, it's right, resolutions, proclamation, and orders. Then we went through, do we would like, would we like to have a consent agenda, everyone said yes. So then I left you group one, two, and four. And everyone agreed on one, two, and four. Now the last one is number three, which is the tax levy.
So number, so I make the motion that, make motion that we approve, uh, number three.
That's the thing I just told y'all, it's from the agenda.
So, why, why are the other ones there?
Because this is for our general fund and general assistant fund. The other ones got nothing to do with.
You pass a tax levy before you pass a budget, I mean, you shouldn't.
Even a lawyer looked, looked in, like, what are you saying? Attorney, can you clarify?
Attorney, I know you can't ask that question, attorney. Can we pass this after we without, only with the budget, so?
Attorney, already got.
Attorney, you're not an attorney. And the attorneys pink. We know you don't know what you said. Attorneys. Speak for the people, please. To the people. We wanna understand. Attorney, please clarify. She went, I don't wanna hear from you.
Attorney, can you buy us?
You want to hear from the attorney. Attorney. Attorney, see. Let the attorney talk. Attorney, educate us. Nobody gets it. Attorney. Don't let her take this down. Just because she talking fast, that could make it right. Attorney, pink, please.
So I have not had an opportunity to research this exactly, but some very quick research, uh, right now as we're sitting here tells me that, yes, it is generally advisable to approve a budget before you approve a levy.
That's right.
But, but, but the concern though is that you have a timeframe in which to approve the levy. If you don't approve the levy, if I had it by the first, the last Tuesday in December, then you can't levy taxes next year. So it would be my advice to pass the levy.
So if we pass the levy.
I wish you would come better prepared, though, I really do, because every time something comes up.
And you're just trying to say, it's true, that it wouldn't matter. However, if we pass it, then we're in the shade.
I, 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 I wouldn't say necessarily that we're in the shade.
Oh crap, but I mean, it would be bad.
However, there is, there is a specific timeframe in which the levy does need to be approved by.
But I said something, I wanna, I wanna do something, I know this is doing, that's that face.
That obviously, this is a very unorthodox thing. There actually is, no, not per se, any law that addresses this that I have found.
See, and she's been searching for five minutes, y'all.
The towns officials of Illinois, it does say that if this year begins after the levy must be adopted, then the budget appropriation must be adopted for the levy. So as a general rule, yes, the budget appropriation ordinance should be adopted before the levy. However, that if you don't adopt it now, even if that, that, that condition prerequisite is required, that you may, that the township may be putting itself into another bad position. So my suggestion would be, of course, to pass the budget and the levy. But if we can't get both done, at least pass the levy so that, and then it could be amended later. And the budget also can be amended later. But I, I just have a concern about that.
And that's based on your two minutes worth of research, right? I just wanna make sure.
It was last Tuesday in December, which this year is.
Started this by saying she hadn't had time to research. It comes with this answer, it's supposed to be comprehensive.
But you need to end it, and I was having a budget, which I have a budget on the prior agenda on Tuesday. But you guys take it off, being funny. I made this agenda, but the budget was on here, you passed the budget, and you passed the tax levy. Because I'm doing everything the right way, like I'm trying to, I'm preventing the process. Like everybody sitting here jumping through loops and hoes and not.
How you jumping through a hose?
Not hoes, but hoe.
So actually, you see, you just call another meeting, you pass the budget.
We can do it right now. We can do it right now, which is.
It's no budget on it, it took off. I had it on the agenda right here.
Attorney, make sure you're still researching your answers. Because you gave us an answer based on two minutes worth of research. So just make sure that's the most comprehensive.
They can definitely vote on it.
We are, there's no budget on here, we took it off the agenda, so you can't even vote on a budget stack. Because they was being funny.
Nobody's passing a budget. Robert, why, um, can I ask Robert a question? Why didn't he even adjust the budget?
We not on the budget right now, we talking about tax levies.
Now, now she don't wanna talk about the budget.
We are on the budget, she was just talking about the budget. What do you mean we aren't on the budget? She just had no ability to speak.
That's why I didn't have every word that y'all had on the table. So you had seven minutes, two minutes to pass a budget, but you didn't show up. So here we are now, after the eighteen hours, trying to pass stuff. And y'all doing it wrong, so no, I will not be part of, uh, you passing a tax levy the wrong way. Passing the right way, passing a budget. Y'all had all the way from March to pass a budget. March of this year, twenty twenty-four, we're now talking about the next budget. That's how bad this is, guys. This is how much they neglect their boots, but play a game, kicking that road. No one is taking care of the business up here, the last two trustees. But they come here and grandstand and talk about why, uh, we need a tax levy all of a sudden, you got to the thirty-first to make it right.
Just another point, you need to get things out of the agenda.
We don't have the insurance, y'all don't have the mortgage.
This is your common tricks. We can vote on it right now, it's done. As you said, we can vote on it right now, and it's done.
We are, we are gonna vote on it, not right now. We're gonna vote on it, have another meeting, so we can't pass it.
Nah. Motion and a second, call the roll.
Take this a motion.
Call the roll, let it pass the fail.
Let it go to a vote.
Give the people they vote.
First and second, call the roll.
Definitely not voting on this, just told you the process, the attorney just told you the legal process, and you still wanna do it the wrong way.
She just said, yes, that's what she said. That's what she said, yes. That's what she said. That's what she said.
Thank you, attorney.
All the roll, all the roll, all the roll. You can still, you can still run a government vote we know against it. That's all, all the roll, it's a first and a second, all the roll.
Now watch her.
Call the roll.
It's just another trick, it's another point, to have another agenda, and things happening that you can be out there, all the roll.
There's a motion and a second. Attorney? There's a motion and a second.
This is so childish.
Wow, there's a motion and a second on the floor.
Clerk, there's a first and a second.
She's so wack. Who's she go here with a golf club?
Uh, trustee Carla, and a second, oh no, I'm, I'm sorry, I mean.
The attorney.
I vote, I have a motion, trustee Carla, second.
Nah.
Attorney, can you clarify?
She don't need, she already did.
Cause I misunderstood it.
She already did.
And I apologize if I do, did. Attorney, can you re-clarify what you said for the people?
Tiffany ain't gonna let her talk.
Attorney?
Tiffany's not gonna let her talk.
She's going, ignoring the residents.
Tiffany not gonna let her talk.
Attorney, can you clarify the direction you gave?
Tiffany is not gonna allow her to re-say.
Just wanna make sure she's ignoring us.
Trustee Gonzalez? Trustee Gray ever?
She don't know what to do.
She asking her mommy?
Vote no. Now you guys watch them vote no.
No, it's, I, I, I'm one of the people that's in the range of taxes, that where I can't afford my taxes, that you try. And I don't see why we should levy. Trustee Carla. Supervisor here.
No. So you see, they try to raise your prop taxes, wake up there. Next, on the agenda.
That's not what that was. She said motion fail, I thought it passed.
Is there a motion to? Cessante day, one, two, seven.
She's so flustered.
Is there a motion for a second, for one, two, seven? Is there a second? Alright, my motion is second.
Yes, uh, what is? The item three, what is that exact? Tell me additional something.
Okay, um, that's our insurance coverage, uh, whatever I am, I'm gonna explain it more. Cause Robert is the one that deals with this, so it's. And just for the record, so everybody understand what's happening, all these are, are insurance coverage for crime insurance, uh, cyber insurance, things of that nature. This has nothing to do with property and casualty or vehicle insurance, this is strictly those items. Today is the deadline to pass this, this is why I came in here, other than that, I would not be in this building. Um, once we pass this, then this will be in effect.
Uh, what line is that? No, no, I'm saying, what, nine time, eight. That's why general liability, public official insurance, um, pretty much that's for all of our insurance, that's the standard requirement. Okay, so then what is that for? Um, that's for, uh, that's, I agree, that is, uh, um, December first, twenty twenty-three, to November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Nothing after December first, twenty twenty-three. The voter is here to pass that, but basically, our.
But he's not out of order for the door match.
So if we, so if this is what happened.
He's not out of order of just saying out loud.
If ours is coming, we not coming. So anything, so they make, make something today, when it happened, and let's say something happened before December first, ours is coming, we not making it. So this is, uh, by, uh, small tail, and so. So something that wasn't claimed in the past years, but then it's claimed again. Cause it required assurance on something, it was on what time period it happened, and was the date. Uh, okay. Do you have any other time because like, you think, uh? One, December first on the board, yes. Uh, my board is, I'm working very hard, um, I, I have no, no, uh, group, I'm working on.
No, okay.
You know, people are saying, if I'm trying to get some coverage, and they, I mean, I mean, they're gonna come back to me and say, hey, we did it because you've got more tickets and you can't eat. In general, this is, um, this, so. I, I, uh, I don't wanna speak too much, cause, um, they still realize that we talked about executive section. I would say one thing is a lot of media press and seeing me on YouTube, I would, I would, I think we should have a conversation with the board about it. And she's open to talking one-on-one with the board, so you can either have it, but, but some of them are not. Let's turn around, chairman, so say, not saying we talk to the board, they find something, or whatever, look, how long you gonna talk? I want to say our board, they're, they're working so hard, we have, just gonna have, we have that one offer. No, I'm saying, if, if, if something is found, uh, how fast? Oh, yeah, that, um, just right now, it's, it's an emergency, so once we find something, we will have to do an emergency meeting, bring it to the board, and you have to prove it. So soon we find something, twenty-four hours, we can say meeting that same day. Soon we, we find something, you might get a call here, you come in.
Just show up.
Show, you gotta show up to the meeting, you get twenty, cause you have your own thing on the agenda, but it is considered emergency, you got an emergency meeting, then twenty-four hour, turn down some, if you gonna have more, but. Let's say we find something at noon, I think we can have a meeting, and within that hour, you guys.
Okay, thank you, Robert. And, and just to clarify, I do completely agree that this is an emergency, and should, should you guys find insurance that will cover the township that was agreeable to?
That will cover.
And you think that an emergency meeting should be called, and that the board should vote?
Like y'all always have told us, they should have an emergency meeting, they should have a special meeting, or we did have courage. And we put it on the agenda, put it on the agenda.
Courage. Courage. She is so illiterate.
Second on the floor, please call the roll. To approve items one through seven.
Trustee Gonzalez. Trustee Carla. Trustee Gray ever.
Looking at Tiffany. She don't know what to do, cause Tiffany's talking and head instructor.
Yes, and supervisor here. Oh, we did not, we did not, so sorry. We need a motion to approve one through seven.
So this is for the motion to approve one through seven, so she just made it. She gonna call for a lot of them.
Second.
I'll second.
Gonzalez? Carla? Gray ever? Supervisor here.
Yes. Alright, uh, next on the agenda, of course, is public comment. Um, I'm gonna say a couple of things, and then he gonna call people from this list, um, he come up and speak, he have three minutes to address his body, and he can talk about whatever, um, we just discussed, you see? First, I just wanna talk about, a couple of things was removed from the agenda, which was for two, uh, December seventeenth. One thing I put on the agenda was to adopt the budget, the appropriation budget for the township and general assistance. Another thing I placed on the agenda was to adopt the budget for the general fund. Those two items were removed from this agenda. The great thing that I was trying to push for all residents of Dora Township was approval of supervisor's one hundred percent property tax refund from all homeowners throughout Dora Township.
We don't need that fifteen dollars.
About your property taxes, I was behind, so I felt the need to make sure I gave you, uh, some kind of relief for this holiday season, so that's what, that was on the agenda. Also, approval of bonuses for all Dora Township employees, that was on the agenda. And thanks for not leaving, we had an agenda to approve and accept the resignation of Jerry Jones. He's a trustee that quit, um, a while ago, and that's why they kept playing this game, and trying to hold him down the clock, and wear our sixty days. And we have never, ever accepted the resignation of Jerry Jones. It has to come before this board for approval, for us to accept it, for the clock to stop. The clock cannot even stop until. So that's another issue, uh, for you. Also, y'all just saw us, this play, uh, paying bills here for Dora Township. It says from heart that we did not agree to pay bills for them. Everybody that was a member, everybody did work for us, it, it really hurt, and I'm hurting for them, which I don't get the cause later, because now they cannot have a great Christmas, because they spend their money first to give us progress. And then we supposed to reimburse them, so when we don't reimburse them, we hurt them, little bit people know. And it's really hurting everybody Dora Township that look forward to that food box, like we did. And it's really hurting everybody throughout township that looked forward to that food box, like we did with Thanksgiving, we gave green beans, potatoes, noodles in the box, we put seeds, it's all in the box, everything you needed, you didn't even have to go to the grocery store. That's how I worked that box once. So, that you will not be getting for this Christmas, due to the fact that the two trustees on the end, Chris and Carmen, uh, chose not to own, to pay for boxes for you to get food, or food for the food. Um, also, the toys, y'all know we do toys every single year, you know, Frankie Karina was here every year, and the toy department, so, why would we not continue that same thing here in the township? We did it last year, it was epic, we had where, it was like Toys R Us, you just walk in, and you pick out what toys you wanted. Each kid got three to four toys, it was really dope, y'all think it was a little cool today, y'all signed up, and they really hurt about it, cause I've been getting calls all day, and relates to, hey, I'm gonna give a toy out tomorrow, I'll give out Christmas boxes tomorrow, you might look forward to that. So, they hurt that they're not gonna be getting those items tomorrow. Um, last but not least, we're gonna schedule a special meeting, uh, so that we can pass our budget and our tax levy for this year's out, and of course, we wanna do it the right way, we are supposed to always pass a budget, but we went the entire year without passing the budget, we played all the trips the entire year. So this is why we're here at this, uh, juncture, as it relates to passing a budget, and then passing your tax levy. Do not ever let nobody come and try to, uh, fool you into believing we should pass a tax levy, and they increase your property taxes, you don't even know they increase them more. They didn't give you no budget, they didn't give you no kind of outlook of what the plan is for the year, how we gonna spend the money, what we gonna do with the taxes, nothing. Yeah, just push it, push it, push it, that's all they're trying to do. So pay attention, guys, because stop letting people, uh, trick you because of all the chaos, and you're not reading or paying attention. Educate yourself first, before you just go off the, uh, hammers. Um, next. Appointments, let me be clear about appointments, how they kept putting out this misinformation. Appointments works just like this, all you guys saw, we get appointed, you saw Carmen get appointed. The appointment is not sole person of one individual up here in this board, it is for everybody. Everybody on this board get to pick and choose who they want, they either gonna get a motion, or get a second, or they don't get no motion, or don't get no second, or don't get no votes.
Don't get no.
As you know, a lot of people got their names thrown on the table, and couldn't get a second, let alone get the votes to become supervisor, or to become the trustee. So that's how that game goes, it's not, uh, he's trying to prevent supervisor opinion from appointing, I can only suggest someone, just like everybody up here can suggest someone, but you gotta have a second, and you gotta have the votes to make that person a trustee. Just so you got the truth of how we appoint somebody, uh, way up board. So what they're telling you is so misleading, and it's all false, it's all negative.
The card makes it high break and vote.
Of trustee, uh, Carmen Carla Erica, she's a liar, and I'm also.
My name is Robert. Exactly, you're a liar.
You know, I'm trying to say my name, my phone, and I'm being in court to remove them from the directing there.
And it won't work.
You go, girl, you go, girl.
Right, that's where she needs to go.
And y'all should not want anybody to judge your community.
We don't want you. You go. We don't want you. You go. We don't want you. We don't want you, we don't want you. We don't, we don't want you. She just don't want us to talk. She wanna close the meeting.
December seventh, when we had the schedule board meeting, they did not show up to the board.
Thank you guys for not showing up.
When you show up, and did not even show up to the actual board meeting, to those things.
Thanks for not showing up. Thanks for curbing her corruption.
Didn't can yell, say whatever they want, it's, y'all, all I want you to know is the facts, the truth, and another side. Not listen to the lies and the manipulation, and the board cannot move anything, but keep doing other people's, their, their work. Um, Carmen Carla, and, uh, Chris Gonzalez.
You are liar. For. Thank you.
Judge is gonna love you.
And you're past that issue, those are fucking us, this behind all this, this poor act, the township, the township doing right, we on circle, understand this, I'm showing, y'all have seen our eye, everything shows surplus at the township. I get the child on everything to look bad or be bad, but it does not make it. When I came over there, I turned it around. Y'all had a four point six million dollar deficit.
I did this, I did that.
And you have nothing but surplus in every single account, in the township.
We don't even have a budget.
Despite the credit that you might want to give, so, everybody go to the office, child, it's just one thing, and my own, and my own way.
Why is it about race? What is this about? Thank you.
You think that area town, you want to, you want to. No. The dress, if we have another meeting now, it's one or two. You go, girl, you give me three minutes.
No, no. Right here.
Three minutes, please. Um, and then I wanna say this before you start, it's a lot of people that come up here and.
Then you just say we get our.
Do not live in the township, so, please do y'all research, stop allowing people to talk negative about communities, and it don't have any for a township, let alone village of Dalton. It's people putting out false information, wrong information, and they not.
Oh, my God. Does she, my town, and she still got three more minutes? Does she still have three more minutes? Okay, thank you. My clock's starting, okay. Alright, so I just wanted to, um, say thank you, trustees, for holding out, for saving her last-ditch effort to steal. Um, we understand what's going on, even if her supporters are not with it, we understand what you guys are doing, and we thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Uh, when it comes to, um, this election, I'm so glad that she's not even on the ballot, so we don't even have to worry about them on her path, the inauguration. So, um, you know, it's, it's something weird, when she just sits up here and spews whatever she wants to spew, and think that she can just talk down and degrade you guys, but then, nobody can say anything against her. That's the problem with a dictatorship. She said that she hate dictators, but that's what she's shown up here today, is that she is a major dictator. Um, y'all gotta make sure that, since she's not on the ballot, that y'all don't vote the other dictator in, because, believe it or not, she has ties with Christopher Clark. And, believe it or not, Christopher Clark is running for supervisor with the full slate as well. So you guys gotta understand that we have to make sure that we vote corruption completely out of the township. The insurance, for her being uninsurable, that's ridiculous. You wanna sit up here and lie and say that it's their fault that we don't have insurance, no, it's your fault that we don't have insurance. And also, when it comes to the toys, I am sure that anyone that don't have toys, you all have a town that gives out free food, as well as free toys. So don't just always have to rely on the township, because that is what we call a public aid office anyway. However, you can call two-one-one, you can go to churches, it's other places that you can go for when you're in need. It does not need to be the township all the time. Unfortunately, the township is at war, so, until they get, when all she's trying to do is the last-ditch effort to steal. Thank you guys for listening.
Denise Clark? My name is Denise Clark. And I, I just moved in this township, and I haven't been here for seven months. And for the seven months that I've been here, it's been war, just war. I moved from the city. I moved from the city.
Everybody coming from the city.
I can, because I want to be a part of a township that's going somewhere. We're gonna have to, we, and, 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 and I know everybody has their own, whatever, I, I just believe that some of the things from Dalton is feeling over now into the township. And, 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 and another thing is, I'm thinking about those seniors that has to go to dialysis. And, they get their check after beginning of the month, so they didn't plan for the end of the month. How do they get to their appointments? You know, the kids just.
The vehicles didn't stop? The vehicle's still running.
Or she's fine, she gave us other options. Oh, you talk about seniors in there, life, and people that are gonna be hungry, we have to think about things like that, and yes, we just roll things out. But I just say, man, the best man win.
She not on the ballot.
Come in with resolution, we cannot just keep fighting, let's come with some type of resolution, and let's think about our seniors. That's, that's, that's where my heart is. Let's think about our seniors and during this Christmas season, let's have a merry Christmas.
Uh, Alicia, is it on?
As a homeowner, though.
Say anything, like, afternoon, um, wanna start, and I hope everyone can hear me, by saying that Tiffany did the exact same thing when it came to the budget meeting, which is way more important than this meeting, she had that meeting on a Friday at one o'clock in the afternoon. She was hoping that someone would show up for that meeting.
Hello.
That backfired, but for her to sit here and talk about the fear, I mean, she did the exact same thing, is the face of contradiction hypocrisy, and just a liar. Okay? You love to call Carmen, Carmen out her name, Carmen's standing up with integrity, with professionalism, you know, she's.
Thank you.
She's standing in fight, because you guys make this a hostile work environment, and every time she said, you better come to a meeting, who wants to show up to this environment, Tiffany? You bring chaos. Somebody said, you know, if you love the people so much, why don't you step aside, step down, look at us even, when we're talking to you, if you love the people, and they ain't know what you do about it, why don't you look at us, acknowledge us?
Why she smiling? She is such a weirdo.
Um, we're so, but I didn't just vote, just to let you know, there is a program through the state, they are on Medicare or Medicaid, they can pull, and they can raise rights to any medical.
Absolutely. Pace as well.
Our seniors may not insure being. So, just to let you guys know, you can research it, there is, um, rights available for people, and you don't even have to be a senior, if you're on Medicaid or Medicare, you can get rights to any medical.
Absolutely.
Wanna make that, uh, clear?
I love you.
Um, you know, you talk about, you know, insurance, insurance, you had an event yesterday at the Melanie Fitness Center, was that place insured? Okay, I just need to know, was it insured, how did the residents get there? Did you bust them in on uninsured vehicles?
I saw the video.
You should have brought your own town yesterday, there were several spots, it was the third township, vehicles on the streets. Okay, whether they have insurance or not, they were on the streets. Um, you know, also, you know what, Tiffany, I mean, I hate to do this, I hate to call you out your name, but you are a liar. It's proven over and over and over again, you talk about things that you turn around and do, and you, you basically justify it when you're doing them. Also, let me, before I run out of time, why are you trying to take our vote away, Tiffany? The same thing that you're advocating for, for the, because of the caucus, and the reason why you're not on the ballot, you're, 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 that same way that you feel like those voters restricted their rights, you're doing the exact same thing, not allowing the people to vote for the next trustee. That's our decision.
That's right.
Sixty days, they have waited sixty days, and now, now it's time for us to vote, but you're taking that, you're taking that.
No, they started talking.
Your time is up, ma'am, you don't even live in a township, your time is up. Your time is up.
She's a whole homeowner.
What security is? Security. Security.
Thank you.
You can come over here and remove us, she can remove you herself, damn, you don't have any more time, you're the time is up. Your time. Damn, your time is up. Please, touch our leaves, please. Security, are you not supposed to finish your leave, please? Can you touch us, so we can finish our leave?
Thank you, appreciate you. That's my girl. We know you live in a township. I know that, I've been to your house.
Right, right.
Girl, they crazy.
My home, yeah.
How about you live in Chicago? Yeah. Girl, here go Mr. Dan Lee. Greetings.
Yeah, start over, speak up.
Yeah.
When you say everyone in the building, and I might can point out something that's pretty vital to our village. Um, at the last caucus, there was a, one of our, Tiffany hit your associates standing outside, calling people's names out as they approached, to get to get in the line, the long line we had out there. That included a lot of, you know, I saw a couple of the buses out there, that she had people in there, uninsured buses more than likely, but anyway, they could have easily gotten in line, just like the rest of us. But the narrative that was put out there on television was that they were locked out. I got there at five oh five, and there were plenty of seniors like myself, I am also a senior, so when I hear somebody take care of senior guy, yeah, I've been taking care of myself for a moment.
Absolutely.
A lot of other seniors out here, the ones that are paying for some, some of these, uh, situations that, that she's gotten to see. I'd also like to point out the fact that, at December third meeting in Dalton, uh, she got up and talked about respect.
Huh.
This woman would not understand respect if a realtor, like, that came back from. No concept, no concept of respect. As far as exactly as I concerned, whatever, you know, they, they have nothing else to do with it, they know they're going with her, they're gonna be with her. So, we can just cleanse our whole township.
Absolutely.
That's why they got.
Of these, of these people that try to. We have people in here that, that ridicule, that ridicule cancel patients, that goes right along with somebody.
What's up, say that.
Grapitate to each other, so, it's gonna be a few more months, but we're gonna get our village and our township back.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, whether they like it or not, is a roll.
Thank you.
I'd also like to point out that, uh, the beautiful city of Oregon, if you see the township, people was transporting people without insurance, that is definitely a breach of the law. If you're giving a vest, at a building in Dalton, okay, should not, should that not be fees and insurance for that building? I mean, this, our money is just going out, it's just disappearing, because they're proving over and over again, these, these budgets, uh, situations that she's claiming to have, or just the opposite, we have, we get deficits left here, right? Uh, when Lori Lightfoot comes in, we'll talk about it next month, this will really, really be. If they're claiming, well, once again, we shot the hell, they have no concept of what's going on here.
Your time is up.
Your time is up too.
Time is up.
Say it again. Thank you. She said try to make the ballot, she didn't make it, she didn't make it.
You tried and failed.
She failed hard.
You tried and failed, you're never on that.
I wanna be on the ballot.
She's not gonna make it.
I wanna be on the ballot.
None of y'all, y'all don't, y'all don't. That's right, I don't have to say, y'all be tight. And, excuse me, I. He looking for a job. He keep getting fired once. He, I wanna educate. Tiffany, get here.
Mm-hmm.
She always say she wanna educate the residents, so, she got one of the residents to educate her.
Yes.
The buses that you had yesterday at Melanie Fitness Center, quote-unquote, police station, having bingo, first of all, you should have had amusement license from the village. With consent of the board, in order to hold that event. Also.
Also, trustees, I wanna ask, because there also was a bus there transporting residents. If you didn't have any insurance, were those buses insured?
They shouldn't be on streets.
Evening at six o'clock?
Answer the question.
That's unheard of, because that liability will fall on Dalton. We have our own issues with Tiffany here.
Thank you.
Okay? And at the caucus, you had six buses out there transporting residents. That was illegal. They be educated.
She was saying.
You cannot transport residents on a bus to a caucus, to a event such as that. That's illegal. Let her know a term you just sitting over there, let her know that that's illegal. She need to be educated for, and that's illegal to do.
Hello. Thank you.
I also, I wanna know approximately why she's sitting up here telling the residents that the trustees up here will not vote on giving you a tax rebate. If you think about it, the last one you received was probably, I mean, you might have received less. My taxes are extremely high here in the foreign township. I received thirty-five dollars.
Wow, mhm.
So if you have, what is it, two million dollars that you wanna disperse upon seventeen municipalities? Think about it. Think about residents, how much would you receive?
Exactly.
She sweating there to hold on, to make it look like she's doing something for the residents. And you're only gonna receive fifteen dollars.
Right. Thank you.
Fifteen dollars, call me, I have it. You know, I'm not gonna even entertain you two clowns.
Okay.
It's just three clowns. I'm not gonna entertain that.
Your time is up. Your time is up. Your time is up. Your time is up.
Some of them, we stop talking. Up when we stop talking.
Where's the security at? Where's the security at? I am secure.
Baby, got stuff to do, this is your time.
Play the child.
We ain't playing with you. You're a kid.
Make sure that timer's working.
A lot of people got, here are talking about the different services, right? The foreign township has been around for a long time. A lot of people have seen services on the foreign township. As the senior services manager, we service a lot of families.
Yeah, well, you know, she's looking up.
It's very, very large service program to continue. We have vendors who have not been paid. We do not have access to our.
It's like the, a widow, the bride and the groom. Oh my God, I'm not even getting home, my video.
I am asking and questioning the board today to please reconsider passing this budget, approving the bills. We want our lunch program to continue, and we would like all our other bills to be paid. I am asking you, please, a lot of seniors will be affected. It's the holiday season, a lot of families not have family members to provide for them.
Well, we have a village.
I'm shaking right now, because I cannot believe everything that has gone on today. I am begging you.
That's your mayor, your supervisor.
She gotta stay there, or she gonna lose her job.
You gonna lose your job.
There are some deals that wasn't affecting any services that were taken off. So if supervisors pay, you're wanting to support the motion she could have, and all the bills could have been minus like seven bills. So I'm still willing to do that if she is, but other than that, if it don't, doesn't get paid, then, then not.
That's right.
That's not true. She needs to pay all the vendors. The vendors on there, they have.
No, she don't need to pay all of them.
And you just pay everybody.
Cause some, there goes. That's cause she just wants to pay all of them, cause it's some, it shouldn't be in there.
They all paid performers. Okay, isn't she over three minutes? And she work here. She work for the township.
But on behalf of senior services, because I'm managing them, it's the other department here, it's here, they can come represent their department.
I hope this is not still public. But I mean, that's why I kept talking.
Those other departments and services, however, on the agenda, it is, um, number two four six and two sixty-six. That's actually our holiday event, that's on the agenda that was, you know.
I, I didn't announce it out loud, these are, it says potential and voice services. I did not take those off, I took off the things that were against or not.
Why do they get such a question?
That is the only thing I was taking off, nothing for senior services, the youth department, any other services were taken off. So again, my devotion was to take off about a couple of things that aren't in compliance with the mark of the Lord created.
So I, so I disregard them.
Yeah, those are potential, I mean, because sometimes I ask questions and they answer the video, so I got the answers filled, so again, ones are taken off, so.
And it was taken off, and we give you the minutes after this, we do got another need to go to.
It was not taken off.
For the record, we want Mr. Gray to vote and know about us.
Oh, oh, yes, yes. Let him know, Chris, come down.
Pay all the vendors, pay all the vendors, not politicize certain vendors, pay everybody.
No, cause you got someone that shouldn't be on there, and you know that.
I got one more, but then I gotta leave. Don't you think I'm not trying to hear you speak? So come on up here, I got another.
If you got here on time.
I came here because I wanted to pay for the insurance.
You should have been on time then. Kinda rushed everybody, she wasn't on time.
I definitely ain't getting this bitch.
Good afternoon, everybody, uh, my name is Eduardo Laskis. I'm from the outreach department. Uh, back there, my fellow coworkers, I feel like we have to be very clear to the residents, because to me, what matters more than anything is making sure that you residents know what's going on in your township, which is the primary function for outreach. What we did was hold on every single one of your doors, every seventeen, twenty. To inform you guys about resources that you guys have access to. And I wanna make this very clear.
He said he going door to door.
Anyone who's watching this on livestream or here in person.
Don't open your doors.
It does not matter who are the trustees, it doesn't matter who the supervisor is, or whoever's in that position. Our main goal is just to inform residents about what is happening in our township, whether they be events or resources.
She forcing them to go door to door, that's so pathetic. She that pathetic.
For me, that's all I ever care for, and that's all I.
Tell them they can own the free indeed. Nobody. He, he works for the township, so. He just telling about nothing. He gave out a food box, ew.
None of this is possible without any of you. You are our boss. You are the ones being controlled, you are the one that tells us what we can.
I'm not putting him.
She don't like all that, she saying too much.
You are in control.
Y'all see how she smiling at him though? He saying her speech right. He get a bonus for that.
Outreach is loyal to one group and one group only, the residents, because you're the ones that matter. You're the ones who are consistent, you're the ones who are always gonna be here. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Definitely electionary. I wouldn't even, uh, say her name on my list.
First of all, my name is Tiffany Hughes, and I am the director of general systems and the food pantry. We have been affected by all this conversation today. We can't give it away because we don't have our bills paid. I sat there just now, and my vendors are calling me on my cell phone. They've stopped our food from being delivered.
Good.
So guess what, ladies and gentlemen, we don't have food boxes to give out, and these five young people can't go out and deliver them.
Oh wow.
We had to rent trucks, I follow rules. If you tell me we have no insurance, I won't drive, so therefore I rented trucks for the company, for these men and women to deliver boxes to our senior, to our senior buildings. I'm not asking for much, just for our deals.
I wonder how much she paying these people? They getting some good ass money to lie.
Please verify that, that you can hold us accountable for that, because I remember, I've been in the foreign township since nineteen ninety-seven. I can tell you how many bags, I can tell you how we went from bags to boxes. And now with boxes, you're closing.
How many minutes she give?
And guess what?
Three minutes, clock.
The clock ain't counting.
See, that's why you just gotta use your time like a podium.
We have always had.
They don't use the time.
Please, we can't get any more vendors. I'm bagging them on hands and knees, literally.
That's that, I wanna still.
To give us our.
Don't help them.
And all I'm asking is for the board to reconsider that, to vote.
They voted yet. The board voted for what she's asking for. They didn't vote for Tiffany's.
The township supervisor has several.
So Tiffany's, um, printed materials, that's what they said no to. Nobody's listening to her.
So I wanna still.
To approve all the bills.
No, not all of them.
But you got an issue with it, but please remember, it is the holiday season.
So?
And I feel bad because if you.
So it's a holiday, let them steal?
Choose a sack building? You're going to see.
Three minutes, clock.
A lot of stuff that I got, I can't give away. They're holding my meat hostage, and I'm okay with that, because that's what they haven't got paid. And that's what, we can't pay the vendors, they can't pay their staff.
Huh.
So what's gonna happen to their staff? Is that all of you won't consider paying the bills? We gonna have internet services on the buildings. Security, you want security, they want to give us extra security, because the bills are not there.
Why y'all need security for seniors?
Please, ladies and gentlemen.
The seniors fight?
The men and women out of the audience, it, it is enough pressure on us, on their.
But she get three minutes though.
Of not knowing on the staff.
They said yes.
I just asked for all the bills to be.
No.
And I understand that, I hear you a lot clear, but the GA is a different policy and decision for that, so please consider that. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so very much, and happy holidays.
It's like the bride and the groom side.
How sad is it that no one wants to. I've been out here, I've been living in this township since my son was sixteen. He's fifty-one now. I never, in my. Seen the chaos, the backstab.
You won't see it again.
Jealousy, you're part of it.
She won't see it again.
I consider it, don't even consider.
It's almost over.
Senior citizens because of your agenda. Everybody ain't gonna, but everyone ain't gonna get along with everybody. Okay, but it got to be.
And that lady is. Nice.
This bringing in all the outside people into our township.
At least give me a Santa Claus hat.
Outside people are just running our township.
I love y'all, wanna hit her, I'm not putting my camera on her.
But you got office next to this, this is bringing it in here. Like Tiffany said, she was amazing. You got people sliding here, buzzing here, just despite all kind of chaos. And another thing, if you not affording township residents, you need to stay off of these mics because you don't have no concern about what's going on.
Is she talking to you?
Look, she only talking to the person, ain't a foreign township, don't worry about the girls.
Tiffany don't even live in the township.
Hello.
Tiffany don't even live in the township. She don't even live here. Let me tell you something, I'm believing like.
That girl is.
Right, don't just leave it like that, leave.
Drop the mic.
They been yelling out Tiffany.
Like I told you, your mama should be fucking stellar.
Oh my God, this girl, so many, so many, this Tiffany's people, y'all. It's Tiffany's people, y'all.
That's how they talk.
Tiffany's people, y'all.
That's how they talk though, they try to go.
Every person that gets up.
It's cause they, that's what I'm saying, like, you talking about people mamas? You talking about people mamas? That's how mature we are now, we talking about people mamas.
That fifty-one year old son ought to be ashamed, he ought to be.
I thought they said she was the last one.
If anyone can do food, there is such a problem. Will the hospital, if you will, list, uh, close, visit to, where you live at, so that you can call their number.
Free indeed.
Seven, three, two, four, seven.
She don't like that.
Six, three. I repeat, no, it's seven, three, two, four, seven, three, six, six, three. And also, as you know, they also give out Christmas stuff to eat, too. So.
Yeah.
There are other areas for you to look into that will have.
Red Cross?
Even if our district has something. So don't be, don't be thinking that you lost, they always want to be.
Two one one?
You are living in the ghetto.
Yes.
We do not live in the ghetto.
That's right.
We got ghetto administration.
If your income is not correct, I do not pay twenty-three thousand dollars a week. Even if I was on public aid, it'd probably be just as much.
Hello.
So don't be fooled by this, this crazy ass shit that's going on.
Ooh, thank you.
I'm tired of hearing this every day.
Thank you, ma'am.
Every day, I see something on the news about Dalton, and about you. You have no respect.
Now she actually looking.
You call about her name. They got all sort of names for you. You got more, they got more names for you than they do for her.
Mm.
I told you, you think you can say whatever you want to say, and you think you're gonna be the.
She actually looking.
And you still acting like a little girl. And I don't understand. You talk about seniors loving you, I had a lot of respect for you. I was looking forward for good things from you.
Thank you.
In the long run, you have made me feel like an unhappy parent.
Thank you.
Wow.
Her parents should be too.
You should be ashamed of yourself. And another thing, you don't have to put your name on a box, you can put your child in the depository on there. And next thing you get, and the tax.
I wanna still.
You need to remember what you were talking about. You need to go back and look at the videos like I do. I see you all the time. I listen to you all, I'm going back as far as twenty sixteen. And you need to go look at yourself like you need to. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Yes.
I appreciate you. Thank you.
Great comment, thanks for the resource.
Two one one works too, y'all, y'all can call two one one. The food depository in Dalton, free indeed.
Happy holidays, Merry Christmas. I'd like to thank everybody, the board for coming out today. Uh, I'd like to thank the residents and the people who aren't residents for coming out today. I just wanna make something very clear.
Don't be talking to the news crew.
What I've noticed from this township is something that is amazing. It's something I've never seen before in my entire life, in all the cities and villages and municipalities that I've visited. I've never seen something quite like this before. You have a gift, a rare jewel. You have a supervisor.
This bullshit. Oh my God, from what he said. She can't even get on the ballot. Tell her to get on the ballot. But we got a, a rare jewel. We didn't vote for her, she was appointed.
There was a line miles. A people who actually wanted the services that they already paid for. All these services is behind them. That's what you're missing, understanding is behind them, y'all. You've already paid for these services. You're only receiving the services that you already paid for.
We said that.
If you went to the grocery store, and you got all the food in the grocery store, and then you go to the line to pay for it, but you don't have to pull out a check because you already paid for it. Because you already paid for the services, you deserve it.
We deserve not to be stolen from. Y'all don't listen to this idiot. We deserve for her not to steal our fucking money. That's what we deserve.
That doesn't mean you don't deserve it, you deserve it.
I wonder how much she paying him to say that.
At work for you. At the end of the day, no matter how you feel about your supervisor.
She definitely listen.
Or don't like her.
Don't.
Okay, because what you're hurting by not allowing people to receive their services that they paid for with their tax dollars, which is thousands of people, cause I've seen them. I'm not telling you from what I heard, I'm telling you from what, from what. Which is thousands of people. Cause I've seen them. I'm not telling you from what I've heard. I'm telling you from what, from what I've seen. I've seen thousands of people show up and begging and glad to receive.
He said begging. He said begging. Thousands of people begging.
The township is made up of thousands of people and those thousands of people want the toys from the township.
Cause she wanna, she wanna steal your identity. Cause she wanna.
Time is up, it's three minutes.
It's been three minutes. It's been three minutes. His three minutes been up.
His three minutes are up. Tell him his time is up.
Alright, see you later. Be safe. Alright.
Time is up. Now he trying to put his hands on me when I keep talking, but he gonna keep talking.
That is. So now we not residents?
I am a resident of the village of Dalton for twenty-five years. I'm a resident of Thornton Township for twenty-five years. As a resident, I am very proud of Chris Gonzalez and Connor Tyler for taking a stand to defend what is right on the long term for us as Thornton Township residents. I'm very proud of it. My second point is that, a replacement trustee is voted in for Thornton Township leading in one as residents. It should not be something where the supervisor decides that maybe. That should be the decision of the residents of Thornton Township. And my third point is, Ms. Tiffany Henry, I have known you for ten years. I met you when Riley Rogers was choosing a trustee for the village of Dalton. At that point, I wish she would have chosen me to be a trustee. Imagine how different it would have been if she would have chosen a real leader like myself. But he made a mistake and I do forgive him. Well, Ms. Henry, I am a mature person. I watched you for ten years, my young lady. I am asking that you would resign.
Hello, thank you.
Of Thornton Township, I've known you for ten years and that you would resign as the mayor of the village of Dalton. This would be for the betterment of all of us. This is my day as speaker, I have spoken. Please resign from both positions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you best. He said yes. I would not put on my camera.
I'm gonna start with a good seeing holiday to everybody. I've seen you all down my eyes.
That was Trina.
Good thing I don't just stare at my eyes. When it come to uh civil.
Mm-hmm, Ms. Trina.
Servitude to the people. That is your all shot, I'm correct.
She said you alls.
Cause this here, this is something to us.
She was against Henry, then she went Henry, then she against Henry.
See, my thing about appointments, y'all played a little game. Y'all played a nasty little game. You messed around with a hundred and ninety thousand people and we're sitting here today looking at the trickle down. In every shape, in every form, it has affected everybody, everything, everybody and every part of every one of these boroughs is out here. I'm not gonna call.
I didn't know we had boroughs.
This ain't been about not running y'all. I don't count on you to set there, I don't count on you to set it off. It ain't never ever been about you all. Cause any y'all gonna take us in? How the ten people that I had to take over to the township last week, I don't have no time. But I made sure to drive they was in for sure. I don't care how y'all get it done. Y'all need to get that building back open. Cause now money go science part of any of this. You didn't put in our vote.
They voted, yes. They just took out our shit.
Man, I contend with so much going on. That was once upon a time, did nobody know me. What about? What about, once upon a time, you nobody know nobody in this room? But when it come to one election, I have seen some of you elected officials. I've seen you all sit up there contesting something you got no god dog on business, contesting. I have seen people treat people in a manner that you wouldn't.
Yes, that's her. I ain't putting on my camera.
And you saw you want nobody coming to your house treating you like that. And then you stand here, it's probably for them and make your whole god dog on family wish they probably didn't know you. You don't know how to apologize. You want somebody to bow down. Y'all don't validate nothing that nobody else is like. Nobody can tell nobody who to love, who to stand with, who to speak up for, who to pay cell, who to look out for. Y'all need to stop thinking that y'all somebody's judge, jury and executioner out here. You entitled to your boy, you entitled to your baby. But you are not entitled to go around obeying no other human being. Make it like they, they don't exist. And if somebody else has an opinion, you wanna dog them. You got this beautiful woman into something that is none of her making. All these people that come out here to do whatever their job is. They have a right to.
The time is up.
You know what? Thank y'all. You know what they say. Lane, don't forget what they did to your grandson.
I would never put her on my list. How y'all doing today? I don't interact with idiots anymore. I got a message from one of my people. Somebody text me. Whoever text me, big ups to you. But uh, I'm not gonna argue with idiots. We almost about to bone her ass out that seat anyway and she ain't on the fucking ballot. So therefore. Alright, let's end this meeting. First, second, second. This motherfucker got a whole. This motherfucker got a whole golf club.
You gonna let her violate the rules?
I'll tell y'all something.
She knows she's not on the list. I tell you, you gonna let her violate?
Get all they ass out. Get all they ass out of here. Every man's one of them. So damn quick.
I'm sorry y'all, I'm still on live. I'm putting on my coat. Cause ain't nobody finna listen to this loud ass motherfucker. This your phone? This motherfucker brought a whole golf club. Who she finna hit with a golf club? She a whole ass looney tune. Yeah, she should be on a three day mental hole. Why the fuck does she got a golf club? Let me go uh. I ain't finna walk out with these idiots. Yeah, I, I got time, I can wait. No, I'm okay. I'm gonna wait around anyway. I'm gonna go talk to Nikita. That was a good meeting. Hey y'all. She's such an idiot. How you doing? She's such an idiot. I.
I know, right?
I'm patient. I already know she ain't gonna get voted into the supervisor seat. So this shit is just a stall type shit. So, they just mad cause they ain't finna get their Christmas little shit.
That part.
But it's okay. We got our way.
God bless. Happy holidays to you.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it. Do you? I got, I got a video, another video coming up. Merry Christmas to you too. Stay tuned. Stay tuned. You coming to the ugly sweater party? I made one. Don't you be too mad.
I gotta get one.
You ain't get one yet?
No, I've been busy girl.
I, I believe it. Look, she like, I don't wanna go out there with her. I don't blame her. Yeah, ain't walking out there with them weirdos. Let them go ahead. Thank y'all. I gotta go to the nail shop when I leave here. We having an ugly sweater party at um Clean House Headquarters. I ain't leaving yet. I ain't, I'm gonna wait until the distractions leave. This shit ain't worth it. I don't feel like having to hurt somebody. Listen. That golf club definitely is a deadly weapon. What happened? Did she say something else to you?
No, I just said, put me up there as supervisor. Mary could be my sidekick and Vivian could be my shoulder.
Yeah, I'll be your security. Do you? Yes. I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have a rebuttal.
Riley Rogers should never have put her where he put her in the first place.
No.
He should never have put her there.
It was him and Zuccarelli though. Zuccarelli.
Looking for candidates.
Zuccarelli molded her. No, Zuccarelli molded her.
To my neighbor and me.
But Zuccarelli molded her.
But I told her I was a repu-, I told him I was a Republican dumbass. I didn't know. I should have said, okay, put me on the Democratic ticket. And she pushed, I, I, I don't wanna say what I said about her at that time. You're missing a comment. You're missing the hot comment.
What comment?
The reason why Riley put her out there is cause she did sexual favor of some kind for him.
Absolutely. His and, oh, I know, I, I know the whole team. I know, I, I know the whole team.
Sorry, she sucked him.
Absolutely. She sucked a lot of people. She sucked a lot of people.
I don't, I don't even know who you're talking about.
Got where she was in the first place is cause she did some sexual favors.
For a lot of people. Allegedly.
That's what she doing. She did sexual favors and that's what got her started and her launching her career. What did they text us?
Alleg-, just say allegedly.
Alleged, alleged sexual favors.
Are you coming to the karaoke?
I don't know.
You should. You know where it is, right? Okay, yeah.
It's two thirty-nine.
Uh, right now it is two.
Two forty.
Two thirty-nine.
This motherfucker said they used to call her y'all go. What's happening, gotta go to work? Oh, okay. Yeah, she um, I mean they um, they have a, their party started like seven. It's a karaoke too.
Yeah, it's from um six to.
No, I think it started seven. Do it say six? I gotta look at the invite. It might be six. Okay. Oh, I'm good. Y'all see, I'm, I'm, I'm real good.
Trying to bake some things for my uh family Christmas party tomorrow.
Okay. You cooking?
So I should try to get on baking.
Okay. That's, that's just good.
Yeah, and I already have cookies and all that stuff in the refrigerator that I made up.
Yeah, I'm gonna go live at the um Christmas party y'all. Make one. I made one. All you need is a sweater and some glue and just get some stuff and put it on it and make it ugly. That's what I did. So, you live in Chicago huh?
Girl.
Who household that I come to if you live in Chicago? It looked like all your shit in that house though. That wasn't all your shit in that house? You know why? Because they think you live in um, because you talk about um, where do we go?
Oh, girl, I don't care what they talk about. I know.
They, they know that you talk about going out there um all the time. So that's what they think you live.
That's the question. I don't have to prove anything about, first of all, I ain't trying to get no food. I'm not trying to get.
Right.
But I don't have to provide anybody.
Y'all see, you got a, the weak ass agenda. They doing interviews out here. They have to leave.
Once again, people were developing, they were denied getting insurance. Then they found out it was, um, it was handed off. They were able to get insurance. We have the same problem here. That's something we need to find out.
So there's a difference between something, obviously the insurance has lapsed, but it's lapsed because, but it, but you were denied.
Now we're, now, from what I'm under, my understanding now is yes, we're being denied.
Okay, so it lasts and now you're being denied.
That's my understanding, yes.
And you know, last night she, so much of these citizens that had worked in township on this bring people to, I think it was, uh, so a lot of people voiced those concerns today. What's your reaction as seen that?
I mean like, once again, I mean our, we're not looking to shut it down. However, at the same time, we are duty as, I mean, our work, we are trusting, we're called, we, we're the trust in us to make sure the township is run responsibly, responsibly. Not being responsible, you don't want to shut it down. But it just goes back to the concept, like I said, where's the information? Let us know what needs to be done. Let us know what the problems. But like I said, today, I, I, I personally saw some of the buses running yesterday during the day. I didn't really see them today, but let's wait, look at the weather out there today. I mean, is it really responsible to have these buses out there running, the weather that's bad? Not to mention, you know, the seniors walking back and forth or something like that. All these buses, it's just the whole wall. You know, why is one of the, why are some of them so bad and other things, you know, busy? So it's like, it just, it doesn't make sense. It's irresponsible. She just had to sit on the board and absolutely, if she wants to blame us, however, it seems to be something that's really wrong.
How you doing?
Um, it's so short, I can't even see.
Hi, good to see you.
Once again, these are questions that we also have. My understanding is that it's a special community church. But once again, it makes sense that we have one building operating on, not, it's not tied to.
Well, y'all, we all making sure that she's okay.
You and me both. That's why I had to shut down, because if I would, if I would've engaged, I was gonna, I was gonna go. I was gonna go. And I know that I don't need to be out here swinging hands right at today. Yeah, that's why I say, we voting her out anyway. She not on the ballot. So, she, she fucked anyway. So, all they gotta do is just stall out as much as they can. So. You coming tonight? You coming to the sweater party? To the sweater party tonight?
Oh, you know what? Actually, I wouldn't be, no, I can't, I cannot.
Okay.
Yeah, I promised to do some stuff with the family.
That's okay. Y'all doing good though. Thank y'all.
Yeah, I just get so busy.
I know.
It's supposed to be a ten minute meeting.
It's supposed to be. It's never a ten minute meeting with a dictator.
You know, we just took a couple out. I mean, it's not, you know, a lot of, I mean, every municipality does it.
Thank you.
Just to get some more information.
Because you are approving shit that not supposed to be on the fucking board.
Yeah, that's what we took out, yeah.
And that's what you trying to, you trying to talk to us like we stupid.
It's just her trying to play games with the support. That's what it's about. It's all, it all comes back to that. It was, this is what, the fourth thing that they're on that's the emergency because, you know, they just wanted to get us to make that vote.
So y'all still have to come back for another emergency meeting, right? I hope so. I hope not, rather. I'm just waiting around because I'm just bored. I gotta go to the nail shop.
Ugly sweater.
Girl, yeah.
You said yours real ugly, huh?
It is. I'm about to finish it when I, I'm about to go to the nail shop and then I'm.
Are you? Your hair is too cute.
Thank you.
Who did the top?
My niece, uh, you know, I had her put, you know, this is all my hair, but I had her put the color in it. I ain't good with it.
That ain't good.
Uh-uh, it's not great.
Oh, that's not?
Uh-uh, it's a, uh, remember when I showed you that, um, that little tool?
Oh, that, that's what I meant.
Yeah, that's what it is.
That's what I meant, yeah.
Yeah, I like coloring my hair.
Fresh cut, got the fresh lines. Alright, move, move.
Oh, sorry.
Fresh lines, yeah.
Yeah. I didn't know your friend gets cut about, um, my barber. That's so funny. Yeah.
Ran into y'all. She ran into the spread.
Sean. That's his name, right? Okay, cause you spelt it a di- I was like, hey, okay, okay. Okay. Yeah. Y'all like my hair cut. Y'all can't see it. I didn't really see it. What time do the, uh, it start at seven? Alicia, do it start at six or seven? Okay. Damn, it's three o'clock already. I beat up at seven.
She got presents on her legs.
I like that. That was, that was good. Did she win?
She better had a one on one.
I was about to say, did she win? That's super cute. Uh-huh.
Or get lit, get lit.
Yeah, huh. Yeah, that's cute.
So cute.
I need to go, give me a Santa hat. You got a Santa? Y'all see, trust the scene. Three hundred.
Clean House twenty twenty five.
Twenty twenty five, Clean House.
Look for him tonight on karaoke.
Absolutely. He's singing tonight.
Charlie Gill is your range.
But what did you sing last night?
You go, I remember that.
Yes. Don't be it. You singing?
If I do any karaoke, I'm.
Karaoke?
Okay, you sound like Tiffany. If I do any karaoke, I'm gonna get the song on my phone and sing with it. I don't got no busy old karaoke machine.
Oh, why?
Cause I wanted the phone so I can get the tune.
The words?
So I can get the tune and the words with the phone in my hand and I can get the rhythm.
I need to go try to find, so I, I'ma see you.
I'm gonna go get you a Santa hat.
Should I sing? Oh, 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 are you, you out here?
Eh, no, stopping us.
Uh-uh, no.
Oh, oh, you got there. On the street, okay, okay.
In front of somebody's house. I like that little tree. Okay, I'll see you tonight though.
See ya.
Put my ugly shirt.
See you later.
Show her, show her that picture. Now, don't talk about an ugly sweater. She had a.
She had an ugly outfit. Right.
And ugly is cute. Remember that.
This situation is almost over. I just want y'all to know that. Tiffany is not on the ballot. We trying to make sure that y'all don't vote for Christopher Clark. And everything else will be magic. So, that's all we need to do. Just make sure Chris Clark don't get voted in.
Then the light.
That's all.
Then she put the gloves and stuff on. I mean, you know, yeah. And I'm sure it only gets better every, every year.
Are they having a contest tonight for ugly sweater? See you go. Cause she don't never have a cane. Now, it's like she need a cane. Hey, hello. You got some, you got some fans on my page. One guy was like, tell her I'm a millionaire. Okay. I'm a millionaire. Like, well, listen, you coming tonight, right? To the, uh, karaoke sweater party?
I might come.
You should. Come see.
I might go home and take a nap.
I know you. I'm gonna go get my nails done. And then I'm gonna go home and take a nap. Look at my, my shit.
I was getting my nails done, but they just so damaged.
No, I'm, I'm just getting polished.
Oh, you got polished.
Yeah, but this polish so old. They all got in their car and left. I'm finna walk out with you. Where you parked? Okay, you, you got, I'm good. Well, I'm gonna walk out with, um, Alicia.
But when you, when you're good though, you know, they gonna come, they gonna.
Y'all gonna see us singing tonight. I'm gonna go live, uh, for karaoke with trustees. Then that way y'all get to see. My tunes. All of the residents. Even the one that don't, she live in Chicago. I just want y'all to know.
At, at, at some function, she always have her, at some of the, they have, um, they have.
Are you gonna escort her to her vehicle?
Yes.
Sweet potato pie.
Which one is that?
The one next to you, she was down a little bit.
Don't say, which function? Yeah, be safe. Come tonight though. Alright.
Talk to Carmen. Okay, okay, bye.
I'm gonna walk out with you. Where you parked? In the lot? Okay, okay. Yeah, I'm gonna walk out with you.
Oh, you do? Okay. Well, we'll see you. Come out tonight. We all walk out, but if you come out tonight.
I'm gonna just stay on my lap till I get to the car. Oh, thank you. Do what?
You was live with Giada.
Huh? Yeah, I was on his live. Yeah, I won't go on there no more though.
Why?
Yeah, we'll talk about it. No, these, these are the same ones.
They are?
Yeah. Oh, you know what? They not. They not. They not.
Remember those laces on there.
They not. They absolutely not. A little. And I ain't even zipped my coat up. That's why, you ain't got no damn coat on. That's how I be. That's why I ain't zipping this motherfucker up. Cause if I zip it up, I'm gonna start getting sweaty. I'm just standing on my lap until I get in my car, y'all. It's cold as fuck. Does she have that, um, that detail anymore? So he completely gone, right? Yeah, I'm good though. I'm good. I'll see you. So fucking cold. Y'all see, we got snow outside. It's beginning to look a lot like Christmas. Everywhere you go. Oh, shit. When I tell y'all, it's flipping cold.